And then we get done. And, okay. Is this back from?
I'm gonna go ahead and call the meeting of the employee council Wednesday, February 10th at 10:05 for order. The thing we're gonna do is roll call. Iowa Williams is present. Allison Williams.
Present.
Joey Longley, Ray, Raul. Governor's Department of Defense. Jay Ritchie and Tim Fox, not sure about yet. Josh White. Lorraine Adada. I give all board is excused. And Eva Mills-Spock. And Joelle Landers.
Present.
The following items will be discussed at this point. Number one, discussion and follow-up on personnel regulations for policy amendments discussed in 2018 and 2019. Joelle, I'm gonna let you know your wonderful binder.
Um. I have on the top sheet. All of the college. Employee council between the time of 2018 and 2019. Um, I believe I've sent these out before, but I think it's in the number again. The discussion really is today. Are we wanting to reevaluate those policy amendments? And decide whether or not that's still what the intention was of the employee council? And then per house, decide whether or not we will table those for the future? And maybe either start from scratch on our current personnel rules and regulations? Or even consider looking at maybe format with some just. Starting from scratch and really revamping the entire personnel rules and regulations? Or if we want to continue to work on and go back to the policy amendments from 2019?
Which is binder is Joe's?
Joe's, I think right here.
Joe, you're right. Oh gosh, sorry. Your binder's right there. Um, so Joelle showed me what I guess it's cottonwood.
Mm-hmm.
Yes. And I really liked their format because it's in two parts. First part is just for Joelle and for the, for Joelle to help with the employees. And the second part is the employee manual. That way the employees don't have to have the whole thing. They can have just the part that the employee needs when they get hired. And they don't need to worry about what Joelle is supposed to take care of, which is now we have it all intertwined. So I do like that idea. Um, the, my thought was we went over the definitions really well, which is on the second page of the binder or third page of the binder. I thought we went over the definition really well. And I think that I'm comfortable with all the terms. Allison, I know you were not comfortable the last time with the way volunteer was defined. Did you have a chance to look over it again?
I didn't have a chance to look at the cottonwood. Um. But I think that there were some issues um with the previous personnel manager. I don't think it was just the definition of volunteer, but you know, that we encompass how, what departments have volunteers? And that we have something in place, which Joelle has already, you know, really uh. Created a seamless process for us, for all our volunteers. Um, granted, things have been different the past year with the use of volunteers, but I, I, I don't have the printout of the cottonwood. I'm sorry.
Okay. Um. So the other thing too is, I think that we need to just go over them again because we have new people on the board. And when Joelle shows them to me, some of the changes that we asked to be made were not made. And things that we did not want in there are in there. So I think. And you'll let me know that I think we just start over. And this time, you know. Um, Joelle will help us guide us through. And she knows, she's very good at what she does, and she can help us with majority of this. Um, so what do you all think? Raul?
Um, I'm fine.
I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
I'm fine with one through one again.
Okay.
How we, what you think, whatever, everything's clear for everybody? And um, this can all be together.
Allison?
Um, I, I absolutely agree with you. I think we should just, um, uh, we worked really hard for a year on that, but the things that we wanted were not in there. I think we should throw out those amendments and um, and start over using this new kind of template and working with Joelle.
Eva, I know your name, but what are your thoughts?
I'm also just doing what you're doing to solve your team.
Joe? What do you think?
I'm a whore. It's been so long since we've done.
Right.
We need to refresh.
Josh?
Yeah, I wasn't involved. It was time to know who's coming. It was great to go over here.
I agree. Um, what do you all think about what the cottonwood, how it separates the personnel from the employees? And making that the one whole document? Um, what are your thoughts on that as we go forward here?
Um, if I may, I just wanted to mention that. The access.
Oh, yes, yes.
That clear. To what directly affects the employee. The second part, which is the personnel operations guy. And that is where it covers more details on recruitment, discipline, benefits, health insurance. Um, and also kind of my, one of the reasons why I really liked this way is that. They separated a lot of the documents that we have been having to provide for all of these grants that we're getting. So instead of sending. Our entire personal rules. We have separate exhibits that we could then send that are more, um. Currently, a lot of those are geared towards the bus. And yeah, I think it would be really beneficial to have a general, a general kind of. Uh, just so it covers bus, it covers spiders, it covers the police and the radios and all of that. So, and that is a big, a big part of that because I do think that that would benefit. Um, moving forward as we have more of those grids. But again, I just wanted to make sure that.
Oh, yes.
That those are accessible to the employee.
Right, but this way we don't have to go through all of what personnel needs to do for us to get to what we need to see. Like all of it will be in the same, like our, it is now, everything's together.
Right.
But you know, it just will be separated out. Personnel will be at the front and employees will be in back.
All right, I think that makes it a lot easier to navigate. And see exactly what we need um, to find out full, they. The middle or they can focus.
Right.
Um, and what everybody's relying on.
Allison, what are your thoughts?
Yes, I, I do agree with this. I think that um, that we'll be starting with this uh, kind of format. And it will allow us to make it a lot more easily understood and help Joelle as well.
I think he was probably gonna agree that because he doesn't know what we're talking about. Joe?
Nina, do I need, do we need to make a motion?
No, we're just discussing it and then the next time we're gonna come back. Josh? All right. Um, I don't, the other thing I wanted to discuss and kind of get a thing is I don't think we need to recreate the will. I think there are still parts of ours that we can use. But if you, once you have a time to look at this really closely with the cottonwood, let's try to compare and start with. Um, the first three sections the next time we come back. So let's make sure we go over the definitions, the hiring contingencies and the hiring policies. And let's see what we can, what we like in cottonwood, what we, you know, we wanna see compared to what we have now. And I think Joelle has the. Policies that we did that had the outlines in it. For those first three, and maybe she could send those out to us so we could see. But you'll notice that on some of them, they're not even what. They're partially what we dispensed, but not all of it. So it'll just, um, let's come back with one. Oh, no, it's the front page.
May I just suggest that for one group?
Okay.
Because we have definitions and then the first items we've got.
Absolutely.
That's a better place to break in.
Yep, you're absolutely right. Sorry about that. Um, so let's, she'll send us those first four that we had done before. To compare with what we wanna see now. And the next time we come, we'll make some decisions on what we wanna see in there, if everybody's in agreement. Allison, are you in agreement?
I am. Nina, do you want to maybe have a work session that we could dive deep, maybe in March and just go through it?
Yes, we can do that.
Great.
All right, so Joelle, I think you've got a direction. And I want to thank you so much for doing the research and getting cottonwood. I looked at it yesterday and I thought, wow, this is really a neat idea to separate it out like that. And not necessarily that you won't get both, I'm just saying it was a neat idea.
What would be the date in March?
I'm not sure. Um, let's, when we go back, I'll give Joelle several dates and then we can just choose which one to work first.
It's like another whole first week. So March, um, I'm doing a refresher CE.
Okay.
The, the whole week too, that way we're permitted to.
Okay, so no, we won't do it the first.
Okay.
Because we need to have some time to look this over. I mean, I know today's only the 10th, but you know, I know all of us are busy. So I wanna make sure that we have enough time to research, plus Joelle needs to get us the other four things that we had done with Dan. So absolutely. So let's try for maybe the second week, Joelle?
Mm-hmm.
And I'll get with you on that. All right, is everybody in agreement we move on to item number two?
Yes.
All right, we've kind of already went over this a little bit, but it's discussion of city of cottonwood format of separate employee manual, personal operations guy. So we've already went over that um, in the first item, and I will carry my idea so much. Um, so I think that if everybody's okay with that, we can start doing that process also. Joe? You with that? Yeah, okay. All right, so. And we already covered item number three, so we're all good with that. So item number four. We already did that too. So we were just racking it. All right, so item number five, Joelle, discussion and review of finance for the period of the week. Physical, fiscal evaluations like finance will have a G F plus. Don't get it all up without your mask on.
Two spreadsheets. Those three are what. We have fiscal. It was. It was four and one and two and three. Proposal one and proposal three. So Carrie has been working on that. It is. Really um, complex. Given that. It's one of the factors. Next to the budget, the same as it was. There's a lot of, yeah, I know. What I did want to leave bring forward to you today was some of her concerns and what she is noticing. Um. Specifically in a number of circumstances. A new employee to the city has the potential to overtake someone in the same position that has been here for four years, 10 years. Um, one example, um, so I included two examples. One from the finance department with two accounts. One that has 19 years of longevity versus one that has one year of longevity. And that's what we need from Carrie. And you can see that if you are to. For the number of about 25 years. How Carrie's evaluating. The, the employee has the potential to make almost $8 more in, in the same position. And so that is one. Purpose, which plan was to encourage longevity. So that's one example.
Obviously.
Mm-hmm. She also took one kind of sort of general, a $3, $1 employee. Again, a new employee versus a four-year employee. At even. Surpassing a four-year current. Well, they would, a four-year employee, it's 15 years. And then the one other example, I hope. Now to do this. So I have an employee that is coming up on the 20 years of longevity. At 20 years of longevity, they get a 5% with our current longevity plan. With the first plan that she's, Carrie's looking at, he, number one, didn't put that in until it's coming along. So if he's not gonna be a last year, I think it's time. Well, not only is he trying to. To get to the next step. He is also not getting the full five. So it's, it's very interesting. And honestly, um, I was gonna mention. This was also taken. Commissioned after, again, the beginning of 2020, so it's been a while. And one of the things at the time, Mayor Budge was the. Mayor was the chair of the civil service commission. And he attempted something like this and he said. It becomes very unfair and really challenging to make sure that you're. And with his understanding of the comments, Carrie really started digging into the numbers. So I mean, granted, the numbers are not, are not completed to look at. However, I did think it was still really important to bring forth these kind of layering issues that. Again, I don't want to defeat to purpose and end up penalizing people. Or we want, we really want to, we want to appreciate. It's the morale. And I, I worry that this could potentially do the opposite.
So when I saw that, I was like, yeah, I don't think that. I think we thought it, but we didn't think it. You know what I mean? Like we, we saw a part of the big picture, but not all of it. Um, do you know if there's other cities and towns that do something else other than the step plan to help with longevity or?
I would not agree with that. I think it's a question. Um, that is something I can. On this, for our work session, include it in that.
Okay.
Um, I'd like to look at some of our cities that are comparable in size. Um, and, and definitely bring that information to us. Again, I, the step plan seemed awesome. And when you hear step plan, it, it does, it sounds really good. And it's not until you get that, that financial fine-tooth comb in there to really see that. So I would be more than happy to bring comparable cities and then maybe even I'll pick, because we're close to Tucson.
Bro?
Um. Maybe it's not the smartest of questions, but I just, it's just a thought. Um, comparing, I'm using the one that says newbie and, and four-year plan.
Mm-hmm.
Um, after nine years, yeah, that's gonna be making more. But what if, what if say, if we started off, say, we'll say year four. And, and they've been here for four years, what if they just automatically get moved up to on the year four of, if they were newbie to 1639? And then fall off from there to where when they meet their nine years? It's gonna be the nine years of the newbie that'll be making the same. Like when the newbie hits that nine years, when people hit that nine years, they will both, when they both hit those nine years, 1730. They'll start in on that 15 on the right side. Just start them at the 1639 if they've been here for four years and then continue to get fine. So it's just, you're just starting them off as every kid in you, but with these years. Does that make sense?
To bumping when people like to have been here with their own, that'd be.
Yeah. So that way it follows, everybody's following the same chart. So once that newbie hits year four, he's gonna be in the same place where that year four already started. So everybody's gonna be going through the exact same thing.
If we can look and see if one of us to be in town, has the map, or if Carrie knows if anybody that's done that or can do some. And I, I mean, that sounds like a great idea, but we need to dig into it. We don't want to.
Like in the initial cost.
Right. Yeah. Initially, yeah, because it's gonna bump. That's what I thought, thought, well, it's gonna bump everything, but that will eliminate, eliminate the unfair.
Right.
I mean.
On the long run.
Also, when you're looking at the, I mean, there's one of these reasons, you have the higher increases. What would it be like to ensure longevity, like move the higher increase to the time plus? So you know, it's a little bit smaller. That way, you know, if we're dealing with women and the people who have already gotten that longevity, margin increases for just starting out.
Allison, do you have anything?
Um, I don't, I'm so sorry, I missed uh, part of what Joelle was saying. So I'm, I'm just listening and um, and trying to figure out, uh, yeah, how would we address that inequality? But Joelle, do you think that it is necessary to look at a whole new plan or can this plan be adjusted? I, I can't hear you.
And what I have seen, what I've carried, uh, as I, with what I have so far. The step plan is, it's the instituting in, in the middle. That is really the challenge because we can, we can try different scenarios. And unfortunately, I think we are gonna get these outliers, these oddball ones. Um. Have it, I mean. Something. Help with that. As. Help as that. Was perhaps looking at the current longevity. And perhaps instead of starting at 2%, starting at 3%. And then having 3% at five, 4% at 10. And, and that way at least we are still making the effort to, you know, show the employees like we are really, you know, we, we're wanting to help. We're wanting to do something and make changes. But something like that might be a better solution. And that's the number of concern I have is that. I know there has been um, talk of increasing the federal minimum wage. And I can tell you that, that is.
Yeah.
Um, because then we start dealing with compression increases. And the grade plan that we approved and we implemented. Before you. Yes. To start from scratch on that too. And so that, that really does, it, it's challenging in the sense that now we have to worry compression races. Because now I have a, a new employee. Um. Or is it an hour, but 15 is what it has, you know. And so that's my concern. So that, my, my one thought was perhaps it would be something, you know, if we want to at least do something. Something for, for this next project. Perhaps that is something. And I think that Carrie will get that one too. That one will be a little bit less complicated for her to kind of extrapolate and get that there.
So what you're saying is the five years to three, the 10 year to four, the 15 to five, the 20 to six, and the 25 to seven.
Mm-hmm. And like that.
Well, if you could ask Carrie to look at that, that may be what we can do right now, but maybe in the future. Depending on what you see out there.
Mm-hmm.
Everybody's in agreement with that. Allison, are you in agreement with that?
Yes, I think so, Nina. I am, I think that, I mean, this is what we discussed at the beginning of, or, you know, that. These are specific individuals who already work for the city. We need to identify them and look at each one of them specifically and make that equitable. New employees, once we set the overarching policy, the new employees will come in. But again, we do need to, you know, really figure out who, who these people are so that we can have, like Carrie did that scenario. Um, I, I think we need to make sure nobody is overlooked.
Absolutely. Do the others have any thoughts?
I think you want for what Joelle's proposing. That may have really been.
That's one, yeah, yeah. So if we can, for the next time, maybe for the work session, if we can have that. If you can't get to it, that's fine, we can do it another time, but um, maybe for the work session. All right, we'll move on to item number six, discussion of wellness funds from Blue Cross Blue Shield, Joelle?
Um, part of our agreement was continuing to have Blue Cross Blue Shield as our medical provider. We did receive the additional $10,000 in wellness funds. And that is, that is looking at the green sheets in, in the folder. So last year, it caught up on us pretty quick with COVID. And we had plans for, I mean, like a Christmas dinner kind of thing. I mean, we have some really neat, oh, summer pool party with. For the wellness. It sort of interrupted everything. And we ended up doing $100 gift cards to all employees and it was to Target. If I do heard that. Um, Target was selected because they had kind of across-the-board wellness, you know. Mental health, wellness, you know, games for the kids because, you know, we're all at home. And with, you know, uh, you know, staying at home. It had medicine if you needed it, uh, and also food. And so it was just selected as a general use, you know, what would benefit someone the best at that time. So this year. It's under the one. Because I do know now that the process is rather, it goes pretty quickly as far as those submitting and getting reimbursement for those dollars. Um, so I wanted to bring it back to, back to the table. And how, you know, I know our representatives here, they've discussed this for employees. Um, in the departments. Where I be. Kind of where we are. We prefer. It's simple. Want to do something along the lines of tablets or a. I did practice on tablets. Because I will make. In, I'm presenting people with, you know, the Arizona Department of Health Services, the website to get on the back. You know, the Arizona Department of Health Services, the website to get on the vaccine. Um, I have found that there are some employees that are working. Those electronic resources at home. If they're not at work where they're, they have a computer. Um, they're not able to get, to access online. They're not able to do things on their phone. Or maybe they don't have a, you know, smartphone. So the thought with the tablets or the Chromebook is we are definitely moving towards more telemed. I don't. Telemed is here. Um, telemed can also be a great resource. Doctors and. You know, telemed does bring a lot of those things closer. Telemed. Need to have that tablet or Chromebook loaded with. Blue Cross Blue Shield. See how much of my deductible have I spent? Knowing that I have a procedure. So that was my one idea and that is why there is, uh, quotes for Chromebooks included in here. Um, and so, yeah, so I would just like everyone to, you know, get a feel what, what ideas are. And then again, if they're having a work session, we can, if it's acceptable, we can look at it then too.
Yes.
Um, Joelle, can I say something?
Of course.
Um, so I discussed this with, um, our staff members and we do have some questions. But also, I, I mean, the idea of getting, um, tablets and Chromebooks into the hands of people who don't have access is paramount. Um, absolutely. One thing though, that we, we look at at the library because we have a program, a similar program to this. Is, um, do they have connectivity? Do they have internet? So, um. That is a real issue if you have a Chromebook, but you don't have a hotspot or wifi. Um, with tablets, you can buy the wifi contract to come with it. But those are yearly contracts. And so, you know, are you putting a financial onus on the device? And then the other question is, I guess, I mean, talking, these would be like given out personally to be personally owned? Or be like a citywide fleet, the same way that we do it at the library?
That's an interesting idea. Yeah.
Yeah. Because, so on a, um, just on our small staff, um, personally. Um, if people are already have their own laptops that they use at home. Um, this, a Chromebook is not something they can necessarily use. Would there be another option for people who already have their own devices? But on the greater scheme of things, you know, to really address, um, access to health, uh, especially through telemedicine. I think this is, um, a citywide issue. And, um, you know, maybe it's something we could look at, you know. Uh, the library could catalog if we bought seventy-five devices, catalog them and only check them out to employees or, you know, figure out some kind of thing. But I, it, it is a big issue, so I really applaud you on this. But when we go to accessibility, we need to look at the connectivity as well as the equipment.
Thank you, Allison.
Does anybody else have any other thoughts?
Well, if we did something to where like, um, the department. Responsible, we did, like that. In the thing. Like, just like my radio where. Then we can get it light down there. As for previous employees. They'll be part of kind of like uniformal on us. There'll be like the department's responsibility kind of make sure that this. We do have a pretty big. For us, so. If we did like give it as a gift, like pretty much. Somebody new guys won't be here for about a month or two. Um, so it's one of those things. And just like me, if I were to leave tomorrow, I'd have to turn on my radio, might be.
And also when she said like if there's, uh, ownership or something borrowed and if you, if it's something you don't need. If there were other options, so how, I don't know how that would work. But I think it does a good thing. Yeah.
Yes, I, and also I should say that, um, I, I definitely agree with those things. And that I'm not necessarily, uh, recommending a borrowing, uh, simply because, um, I, we wrote a COVID grant out of the CARES Act. And I got four, um, Chromebooks, four, just four. And what we had to go through with, um, getting them secure with IT, getting them able to be tracked. Not just cataloged, but all this backend stuff. Um, that's just for four devices and I can't really imagine doing that for seventy-five. But the, the other question is, is of course, what you're bringing up is that if people already have their own devices, they're not checking it out. Then do you have seventy-five devices or, you know, sixty aren't being used or something? So I think it really is a, something to find out if people want it. And probably it'd be easier if they were personally owned, even though I love the idea of this bigger picture.
I can give out. List. Everybody and maybe put it like in an Excel form. When you talk to your coworkers. They drop down with their thoughts were in. They use Chromebook. And then we can actually get some hard numbers there. And if it's twelve, heck, maybe that's something the city needs to work at doing or something along those lines. So, or maybe we need to go to Blue Cross Blue Shield directly. Something like that. From those wellness. So can I just say? List.
Put on there for PC and D. All that different topics that they can do. Not necessarily shy of expressing. But I'll give it a go.
Any other thoughts?
I mean, on the tracking and stuff, how do you track? All those stuff. Public works. All public works, like all those like.
That's not fun?
Yeah, they give us. Wait. Oh, it's just.
That there's. Get more information on the tracking security, um, you know. Sort of. Yeah, because of HIPAA, I would be like, I don't want, I don't want the, I don't want it back. I don't want.
Well, I know. I think if you're using some sort of wellness app, it's gotta have its own kind of like built-in security. So once you sign out of it, you like, once you're out of it, it's like, you would have to log in.
They've got their own. That's a good point.
Joelle. Well, so this is exactly what we just went through. And so, uh, honestly, right now, if there are any employees who don't have a device that need a device for tele, telemedicine. We have four and they're already set up. They're set up so that we, uh, do a factory reset. We wipe the computer when it's returned to checkout to the new person. So right now, those four devices could, you know, be easily av- available to employees immediately for checkout.
Um, I will follow up with you on.
Okay.
But employees like to let everyone know that that is available to them.
Yeah, we, we should talk to Jason, but it's, it is a real thing, uh, what you're talking about, about. Um, we have to set them up with filters, we have to have remote access, we put GPS tracking on them.
Hmm, okay. Thank you.
Any more thoughts? Option. Uh, part of what you did last year or, you know.
Okay, and that's just one thing.
Yeah.
Idea, like get a number of things. I like that idea.
Or have like a. Right. So going on to the next one, uh, Joelle, do you have any comments for us?
You guys said that I was going to send out. The policy amendments that are listed one through four. And. I'm going to set up a meeting for the second week, week of March. I am going to discuss with Carrie bumping one percent on our current longevity policy. And I am going to get important. Members for them to contact staff and get their opinions on the Blue Cross Blue Shield Wellness Funds.
Sounds like a lot. We're going to keep you busy.
I love you, I know it.
All right. Not for this next agenda for the work session, but if you're interested, y'all want to discuss in the future. That you think should be brought to our attention.
Could, uh, Nina, could we maybe have like a department like a COVID update or vaccine update? Or I, I don't feel, we haven't really addressed this as employee council in the last year.
Yeah, but as employee council, that's really not in our scope of, of work.
Okay.
So I would say no. Um, I'm sure if you had questions, either Teresa or Joelle would be able to help. Or maybe there's something that could be put out, I don't know, but I know it's not the scope of the employee council.
That's fine. Yeah, it wasn't anything in particular, just, um, wanting to know how everybody's doing and what you're doing.
Yeah.
One other suggestion is that we will be, uh, working towards. What are we missing? You know, kind of things like that. I mean, granted, I, I can't promise the moon or deliver the moon, but I would at least definitely like to make sure that employees feel like. They have a voice. Um, and that, you know, obviously the benefits are for you. And, you know, we're, we're in the middle for our employees and I know that. But I just would like to, you know, if anyone has any comments, so maybe we could on the next agenda have, you know, just kind of a, a discussion about that.
All right, so let's keep that on the next regular session. Um, but Joelle, I would like to say that since you would take a number, open enrollment seems to be doing very well. Because before, I don't think very many people went or knew what it was or what to do. So I see that you made the effort, so. I appreciate that. I mean, I don't do the benefits, but I see all the effort that you put in.
We might have to wait another year for that chili contest. I mean, we could really.
Does anybody else have any other items that they'd like to discuss in the, the next regular session? I will ask for adjournment.
I move to adjourn.
Joelle, can you get the stop button? And we're adjourned at ten to three one. So actually, all eyes. Any day. We are adjourned.